I'll be glad to do the pledge if you want to do the announcements this morning.
Sure, sure.
We're ready.
It's ready.
It's about ready.
Yep, it's good.
All right.
I just did it.
Well, good morning and welcome to the second meeting here for the commissioners here in April. And we have with us Pastor Troy Bishop with Sunday Grace Baptist Church. He'll be leading in prayer and it'll be over here at podium over here.
Okay.
Troy, over that way?
Troy's going wrong there.
And our president of the commissioners will lead us in the pledge of allegiance act. Please stand.
All right, let's pray. Father, we just come before you today. We're thankful for the opportunity and the privilege it is to come before you in prayer. You truly are kind to us, you are good to us, and you bless us beyond what we deserve. So we just thank you. We do pray for wisdom. We know that people have to make decisions and sometimes they're tough. And so we always pray for wisdom for those who have to make the decisions. Just pray that you would just give them the right state of mind, help them to see the right and to always follow the right. And we just pray then that your will be done because we know that your ways are far greater than ours and we know that you know all things and we only know a little. And so we're always dependent upon you. And so we pray for your guidance and direction. We pray your will be done. We're just thankful that people do take the time to serve. We know these are thankless jobs many times and we're just thankful for their commitment to serve their community. And we just pray for a blessing upon them and we pray these things in the blessed name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you guys for the opportunity to come and pray with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please thank the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Pastor, thank you for joining us today.
Oh, thanks for the opportunity, guys. See you later.
Thank you.
On our agenda, we have current minutes, payroll, claims. And on our claims, we have invoice edit report that had a preapproval that was dated the 10th of April. General invoice edit amount was $106,147.33. Other amount was $43,809.67. Highway amount, $994.13 for a grand total of $150,951.31. And so that was pre-approv- Did I say 31 cents? The grand total on that again was $150,951.13. There we go. Thank you. I would need a motion to ratify that particular preapproval.
I'll make that motion to ratify the preapproval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Stewart, second, Mr. Wright. Any questions from those expenditures? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. Now we have today's invoice edit reports dated for 4/17. In the general invoice edit, we have $386,598. In other, we have $145,320.44. Highway, we have $83,763.2. And is that 615, 681 the correct amount? Grand total of those three invoice edit reports, $615,681.46. And that would include these two items that were just added today. So we would need a motion to ratify the invoice edit reports and two individuals as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion, Mr. Stewart, second, Mr. Wright. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, it is carried. Last but not least, on this set of forms, we have payroll number eight. The formal preapproval was given on April 11. Gross amount of $574,169.2. That was paid on the 14th. So we would need a motion to ratify payroll eight preapproval.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion, Mr. Stewart, second, Mr. Wright. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. And I believe we also have in our packets minutes of January the 17th, regular session, special session, January 27th, that are there. I believe we've had the opportunity to edit those. And if you're ready to adopt those, we will.
Mr. President, make a motion that we pass the minutes from January 17th, regular session and special session of January 27th.
I second Mr. Wright's motion.
Motion, Mr. Wright, second, Mr. Stewart, to approve the January 17th regular and January 27th special sessions as presented. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. Right. Communications and board updates. We'll start with our elected officials. Anything from the auditor's office?
No, none at this time here. Things good.
Right, other elected, special committees. I see our EMA director is with us. As he's coming, we will note that the State Board of Accounts has had a preliminary interview with the elected officials. They'll be with us how long, Angie? Probably another month and a half, two months as they do our audits?
Yeah, I think it's early May, maybe.
All righty.
Good morning.
Sir.
Good morning.
Couple of things have happened since we last met. The latest one being that the president did approve Indiana's request for disaster declaration in 12 counties. Grant County is one of those 12 counties that meets that criteria. So I've had some conversation with the state this morning. I know the executive director was in a meeting with some FEMA folks and so there's a, we don't have the, all the details yet as to how to apply. Soon as I get that, we probably should schedule some kind of press release or something to make sure we get that information out. So on the declaration, there is a web, the website you can go to, disasterassistance.gov. And there is an 800 number, 800-621-FEMA that you can please start to process there. I did go on the website this morning. So Grant County does have a slot in there. So I'm sure there will be more information to come with that. We're just waiting to see, get some kind of direction as to what we do next. But we're hoping to get that yet today. Yes, sir.
My understanding, there is residential grant monies possibly available for that if you qualify.
Yes.
But when it comes to business, there's low-cost loans. Can you explain that a little bit?
So, yeah, I don't have all the details yet. There's some of the things we hope to get today. So Small Business Administration, I'm sure will have loan opportunities out there depending on the type of damage. And I think what, what will come out of the meetings today, we'll know more about what grant opportunities might be available in that as well.
Okay.
But both resident and businesses will qualify for some assistance. We're not sure what that form will be.
And the only reason I bring that up, I do know a business that lost a roof and stuff like that.
Yes.
And when I saw it was only, I thought what the letter said was that it was only the possibility of a low-cost loan. I didn't know what they were going to do for businesses. If you had heard anything else?
Yes, Small Business Administration usually handles that. And I know they're in meetings today with folks.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for clarification.
Bob, do we, as I understand the presidential declaration, do we need to have any declarations or paperwork to local government?
Possibly. So there again, waiting on that information today. I know that was some of the discussion that was going on, whether or not a local disaster had to be declared. So I'm not sure at this point.
I think traditionally, we usually have to say we are in disaster mode-
Yes.
-to qualify. So depending on how they interpret.
Certainly without a presidential declaration, we do. I'm not sure how that changes. What I talked to didn't know either, so they're all putting their heads together down there.
Right.
A couple of other things. So the damage assessment is still ongoing. We have been out daily really since the storms. So Grant County MADHS has been, IDHS has been here. FEMA representatives have been here and through. And also the Red Cross did their own, which was pretty amazing to me because they were the first ones to really come back with a detailed report. So we're still working through that data, but it was pretty inclusive. We know that we have nine family dwellings that have been declared as total destroyed, four major, and then five of those were mobile homes. All the numbers together, coming up about 74, 75 structures damaged in some form or another. So all that going together, there again, just will give us a total number of what actually happened through the two storms that we had. Lastly, I know there was some confusion and comment and things on the internet about weather sirens. So we did reach out to all the municipalities in Grant County that have them. Some repairs were made. So we did a second test. We usually test once a month. We did a second test this past Saturday. Out of the 30 sirens that we do have in Grant County, we had two failures reported on Saturday. And we knew about those and parts and equipment, those kind of things. It's hard to get right now. As you can imagine, across the state, there's a lot of that going on. So two out of 30, I mean, our goal is zero, but it's an improvement. So we're, at no point in time did we have a total failure as was reported erroneously on the internet. That just was not true. Questions? As soon as we get some concrete numbers and information, I'll be sure to get that to you as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Right. Marcus, are you smiling?
Yep, yep, Bob, I'm not spending any money. Just got some updates for you.
All right.
So now you should be smiling.
I am smiling.
All right. All right, so the first update is for the IN.gov. So as you know, we've been in the process of getting that set up for our email system and our new website. And currently, right now, mid last week, I got it set up. We had to go through some verifications to get that added in and now it's on our email system. So now I have to make some changes in the backend here at the county. And then that way we can start looking into getting people switched over or at least get it to where that's added to people's emails. Then we'll just have to figure out a time to-
Pays out.
-to flip it, basically. Because the Grant County, that one won't go away because we'll at least want to keep it for a year or two because there will still be people sending emails to their, you know, folks' Grant County emails. So we want to make sure we keep that. The website stuff, we have a meeting, I believe, Thursday with them. So that should help get the ball rolling on the new website. So hopefully we'll have more details on that. Then the last thing was the, oh, it was for the courthouse, for the doors, for the access control. I spoke with our Verkata tech that we have and he said he was going to get me an updated quote just for the one door that was needed. And he's been out doing jobs. So he said he would get it to me whenever he got back. So other than that, that should be it. So unless you guys have any questions for me or-
I just have a question.
Sure.
On our detention center over here. Have you taken a look to see what that might need to get that back up and running? Have you done any numbers on anything over there?
So are you talking like the juvenile detention center part?
Yes.
Okay, so I do know the sheriff's department went through and they did grab some computers and monitors and stuff like that. So there'll probably be some workstations we'll have to replace. The access control and stuff like that, it should be working and stuff, so that shouldn't need to be touched. So it'd probably be maybe 2,000 or 3,000, like just for computers and stuff. They got a new copier over there that's been setting. So I don't think it would take that much for it to get, you know, run it.
Okay.
I do know there is like some issues with the AC or something like that over there.
Yeah, just kind of checking, checking different apartments and stuff like that. Just wanted to kind of see if we've got any snags or anything like that.
Yeah, from an IT, you know, perspective, I mean, it'd just be putting in other new machines out there.
Okay.
Workstations for people. Other than that, it's, everything's pretty much left, left be, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, thanks again, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Highway department. They've set a new location today.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm not going to spend any money like Marcus, so.
I did good today. Just like Bob did.
Thanks, sir. Thanks.
Basically, this is just stating that we did get accepted for a community crossing grant for first round of 2023. We received $957,500. This was basically for three different projects. And the first one is the bridge replacement up on EOOW between 600 and 700 north. They had $475,000 for that project. And then the next two projects is for resurfacing project on Garthway Road from 38th Street, 200 South into Gas City Limits. And the other part, the paving, was from 38th Street from the Stone Road out to 400 East. So that project was awarded $482,500 for that. So I'd like to get permission for you gentlemen to give Mr. Barzey authorization to sign off on the E docket so we can get these projects started. They'll have to be bid out and everything else, but we'll get a later date on that. So. And just to let you know, the Garthway Road project, the Gas City, City of Gas City got their, or portion of the roadway accepted too. So it'll be all the way, basically from the north end of Gas City, Clerts and 38th Streets. We all redone, so worked out good for that.
I see I have the signing authority information in my email. I just need to send it back to them so they know the signer and then we need your authorization to do that signing, so.
So you need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Since we've talked about so much money, I think it'd be good to do a motion. Mr. President, I would move to accept the $957,500 in community crossing, matching grant funds.
And I'll second Mr. Wright's motion.
And I was supposed to sign for that?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is carried.
Thank you. 10th Street project over here on just west of Nebraska, update you a little bit on that. They poured the approach, the second approach last week in the sidewalk. They're supposed to do the curves and stuff, gutters this week and then start taking the old out underneath the bridge, held it up. And then I'll be here in the next week or two. Whenever it stays warming up, we'll get the resurfacing done. So that project hopefully will be done middle of May, something in that area. We did get that job completed last week for the City of Marion here on Marshall Street in Illinois. We did get that all completed. So that's be done for them. Did finally get sign off on Crane Pond, on allowing us to discharge into that. Name Dale, something, I can't remember who he signed off.
Oh, wow.
I can't remember where his last name is. He's one of the owners of the pond, I guess. So he talked to his associate and they were fine with it, so.
On the north side of the road.
Right.
Yes.
So I guess I will talk to the City of Marion and see if they'll buy the Culver pipes that we're like to install. If you gentlemen are fine with it, we'll just get it done kind of thing, so.
The initial discussion agreements where they paid the, for the equipment or the materials that we put them in.
Yeah.
And Mr. Brinker's been advised of that recently.
Okay. So other than that, that's about all I have to bring up today. So if you gentlemen have anything. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. We have no old business currently scheduled. Do you have any items, gentlemen? Okay, under new business, presentation of continuity of operations plan. Terrace Streets here representing the Health Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm not asking for money either.
Wow.
So we started putting this continuity of operations plan together late last fall. The State Department of Health asked for one. And then at the commissioners' meeting earlier this year, you requested one as well. So we put together what we think is a good working plan. We've had some experience between our flood that relocated us a few years ago and then having to work through COVID. Health Board has reviewed it and they're happy with it. Mr. Jackson looked it over and felt like it was workable. So I'm just asking commissioners to approve it. Do you have any questions?
My biggest question was, did EMA after, after the Health Board approved it, did it fit with his, his plan model? If he doesn't have problems, I don't have problems, so.
I think that will be our new template for the other county departments.
Good, good. Good. Health Department leading the way. There you go.
Hamilton County was kind enough to share their template with me, so I will get some credit. And I think Justin has my hard copy with the other signatures, so I just need your signature on that.
With us before us, we've had it checked as many different ways as possible and we are recommendation to bring this continuity of operations plan for your approval.
Good. I'll make a motion to approve the continuity of operations plan as presented.
Second. Motion, Mr. Stewart, second, Mr. Wright. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
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 Thank you.
Good work, thanks.
You want to get my hard copy too?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, second, under new business, we've got tax sale service support addendum. Madam Auditor, what would you like to tell us about this addendum?
We have a tax scale, tax sale scheduled for October the 12th this year. This is just SRI's tax sale service support addendum. It does increase the sale prices for their services to $125 per parcel. But that's the only change I see.
And just as, as kind of a refresher course, the tax sale itself is not the same thing as the commissioner's certificate sale.
No.
So any, any special nuances there that you want to delineate? Do we feel like the 125 is sufficient?
What was it?
For their, it was $100 per parcel.
Okay.
Right? Yeah. So it's increased to 125.
125.
And the taxpayers pay that.
Yeah, that is paid by the taxpayers.
Okay. Thoughts, comments, questions, gentlemen?
I was curious, same thing Mr. Wright asked, so.
It was approved by the county attorney. Is your ready for a motion?
Just checking. It was approved by the county attorney, but who created it?
Uh, SRI did, I believe.
Is this an SRI document?
Yes, it's an SRI document.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure that was in the record. Now I think I'm ready for it.
Mr. President, I would move that we pass the addendum for tax sale services support.
I second that motion.
Motion with support to approve the tax sale services support addendum as presented. No questions, comments?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is carried. With our treasurer and our auditor in the same room, ladies, do you think that we need to work on any policy items right now for any of our tax sales or are we covered under current state law?
Yeah, I'm sure that we're covered under state law, but definitely ideas, changes need to be made.
Yeah, changes definitely need to be made.
If you want to bring those recommendations, we can adopt them as policy. So it'll be the policy of the county, whatever items we feel like we've learned as we're going along. Okay? Thank you. Now we have credit card vendor proposal. Tiffany, we're with our treasurer. Come join us and she's smiling too.
She's always smiling.
Not always. Seeing the circumstances.
Is this the same thing that we have on the email? Or is this some different?
I think it's a little different.
I'm stuck in the circle.
All right, good morning, gentlemen. Thank you for meeting with us this morning as always. It's lovely to see you first thing on a Monday morning. Bear with me, I had a very quick trip down south to southern Indiana this weekend, so the time change, I didn't realize how much it would affect me, but here I am. We definitely wanted to come and talk to you today about just a couple of changes that we would like to make in the auditor or in the treasurer's office. Some of the things since the beginning of January that we have been asked by you as the commissioners is if there's anything that we can do to improve our office efficiently, timely, to help with our staff, just to see if there's any places that we can make things go a little more smoothly for our office. And something that we've been discussing within the last year to year and a half are some of our current vendors, resources and tools that we have available to us in our department. One of those ways is with our credit card processing. With our current vendor, we absolutely love the customer service that we're provided, but we're noticing that their resources and tools aren't as simplistic as they first mentioned to us. Where it would be easy for the users, such as the taxpayers, to go online to make a credit card payment or even to call over the phone, we're noticing that a lot of them are still having several issues with that. And so it's causing us on our end to take those credit card payments over the phone, which is increasing our man, our time with taking over the phone payments as opposed to them being self-service and taking anywhere from two to five minutes. It's taking us anywhere from 10 to 15. And so we're looking at the possibility of moving to a vendor that can not only offer simplicity for our offices on the backend, but for the credit card users themselves. And also a vendor who will help us with communication, such as sending out reminders or notifications to taxpayers and also allowing them other payment options. Currently, we take Visa, credit card, Discover, and e-check payments, but those e-check payments, they have to call into the vendor themselves. With this potential new credit card company, they offer those same options as well as Venmo, PayPal, Apple Pay, Google Pay. So it's getting us more into the 21st century as far as payment goes and allowing more- So it's getting us more into the 21st century as far as payment goes and allowing more um options. So we have been in talk with Adam Eck. He's been our representative for the last year, going over just how they can help Grant County and our office make things more simple for not only our department, but for the users of Grant County. So at this time, I'm going to send it over to Adam.
Great. Well, thanks Tiffany, and thanks for having me here today. Um, this is my first Commissioners' meeting, so hopefully I'll be able to convey the value of Invoice Cloud pretty well. Uh, so as Tiffany said, my name is Adam Eck. I am a Regional Director of County Tax. Uh, Invoice Cloud is based out of Boston, Massachusetts, but I'm based in Brownsburg. So Indiana is my state. I also work in Illinois and Kentucky as well. So I work with all the counties in those states and help them go through an evaluation process of how taxes are billed and also collected and the various challenges that counties have. And we just see if Invoice Cloud can fit in to help counties with those challenges. As Tiffany mentioned, not only for staff processing these payments and sending out these tax bills, but also for taxpayers as well. So my goal for this quick presentation today was to give everyone here a quick breakdown of the Invoice Cloud platform, uh, then just talk about some differentiators between what Invoice Cloud can come and offer to Grant County and its taxpayers. And then we can go ahead and discuss pricing. And I'd love to open it up for questions. A lot of Commissioners want at least a couple of minutes to ask questions as well. So I'll go ahead and get started. Invoice Cloud is founded in 2009. We are a cloud-based software. Uh, this is quite important because we've spoken with Tiffany about always wanting to future-proof the taxpayer experience. Uh, digital payments, right, and financial technology is ever-evolving. So we've been able to see that over the course of the past ten to fifteen years. And so our software architecture allows us to always roll out updates and enhancements in real time, right? So Grant County is never going to be behind someone like one of our county clients, Marion County, right, where Indianapolis is. So that's a really important piece. And then we're focused on digital transformation. So a lot of county offices and Treasurers are telling me, hey, we're looking to make an investment to be able to keep up with processing high volumes of tax payments. And so we either look to add extra bandwidth in the form of staff, or we're looking to invest in technology, right? They're finding that technology is enabling their staff to do more with them. So we'll continue to talk about the value of self-service. Now, Invoice Cloud measures its success around how we drive up electronic adoption. So we'll talk about paperless billing, and we'll also talk about driving up electronic adoption. Simply put, more and more taxpayers paying their taxes online, that automates a huge portion of Treasurer's collections process. So we'll continue to talk about that as well. Uh, Invoice Cloud has run out of my mom's basement. So we do have twenty-nine-hundred customers in all fifty states. Uh, our parent company, EngageSmart, is publicly traded as well. ticker is E S M T. Um, so differentiators, what Invoice Cloud focuses on is really providing the frictionless online experience for taxpayers. So a really good example that resonates with a lot of people is a little tiny website called Amazon.com. So if anybody's ever used Amazon, they typically tell me it's too easy to transact through Amazon, right? So that's type of experience that we're looking to provide to taxpayers, where they can pay for their taxes, view all of their tax billing information in a couple of clicks, and make payments right from their cell phone, from a text message in a couple of seconds as well. Uh, we'll be offering Tiffany and her team, uh, and taxpayers an IVR, a mobile optimized experience, um, and communications. So, um, not just credit card processing. So when we think about Invoice Cloud, we're going to talk about intelligent communications, okay, uh, collections, and then also how we're focused on electronic billing as well. Uh, we're driving some pretty great results for our counties in Indiana. We do have over ten counties today. Um, I personally worked with signing four in the last six months. Uh, what's important about that is that all four of those are actually using Lao as their core software, which is what Grant County uses as well. Uh, Lao does recommend us as one of their partners. Uh, typically, uh, driving up online adoption by about sixty percent, then driving paperless billing by about three hundred percent, and then cutting down on preventable taxpayer calls, right? So when we focus on this, we'll continue to talk about, uh, driving that self-service so that people do not have to call in to make payments, right? Because that slows down Tiffany and her team. They've got other things to be focusing on, like, uh, processing walk-in tax payments, uh, dealing with payment payments, so on and so forth. And it's also, uh, a bit of a negative interaction when the taxpayer has to call in and say, hey, I don't know how to use this website. I don't know how to use this experience, right? I think technology at this point in time is available and enabling with the right experience in place. So there are a couple of slides that you you'll see, um, just focused on Invoice Cloud's architecture. I'm not going to go through each and every single one of them, but I do want to highlight that Invoice Cloud does focus on making sure that you guys do have the latest and greatest. So we're doing monthly scheduled enhancements. Tiffany and her team don't have to lift a finger, but we are adding really important pieces to our platform to make sure that it's as simple as possible for staff and the taxpayer as well. So last year, I mean, you can see that we actually do allow for taxpayers to pay with cryptocurrency through PayPal. That's a very simple reconciliation process for Tiffany and her team. Uh, I just use that example. I don't think it's going to be adopted like crazy just yet, but we think about five years down the road, seven years, ten years down the road. This is a great example of how Invoice Cloud is continuing to provide that value. Uh, Commissioners really grill me on the security of the Invoice Cloud platform. So we are fully PCI Level One compliant. We are fully NACHA compliant, SOC one and SOC two compliant as well. So as a publicly traded company, we also have publicly traded utilities that use the Invoice Cloud platform that just have to adhere to the strictest digital payment security controls, right? So we continue to maintain that security all the time for all of our clients. And then, of course, we've got a ninety-nine point nine percent system uptime. We are hosted on Microsoft Azure. We do have elastic bandwidth. So it's what's important in terms of that for counties is that counties receive a large portion of their payments typically within a four to six week span. We're finding for May and November deadlines in Indiana, uh, elastic bandwidth means that Invoice Cloud will just get more server bandwidth from Azure, uh, to be able to handle numerous taxpayers going onto the platform at once. And then Tiffany alluded to this as well. This is when we start to break away from thinking about Invoice Cloud as just a credit card processor. So taxpayers are able to sign up for it and are automatically enrolled in digital reminders in the form of text messages and emails. Tiffany and her team, uh, they actually started to cheer a little bit when I started to talk about this, because there are typical phone calls from taxpayers who are asking the same questions year after year, right? How much do I owe? What are my taxes due? A common excuse, I forgot to pay, right? So Invoice Cloud is looking to eliminate that excuse by just leveraging technology. So, um, our digital communications, we don't send out one. We actually send out up to three, okay? So we're making sure that we're getting in front of the taxpayer to influence them to pay their taxes on time. Not only are they reminders, but they also facilitate payment very quickly. Uh, we're then happy to run a demo for you gentlemen if you'd like, but, um, I ran that for Tiffany and her team, and they were very excited about, um, how streamlined it is to make some easier reminders as well. Um, and then just doing things like text and IVR. Uh, we discussed that. Something that's really important about our IVR is that, especially for taxes, it is pretty popular still for taxpayers who want to pay over the phone. We're finding that about eight to ten percent of our payments are coming in through an IVR. So we even look to remove friction within our IVR experience. So that we have caller ID remembrance, so that the taxpayer, um, calls into the IVR and pays in the spring, um, we're actually going to be able to remember their IVR, uh, their caller ID on the IVR in the fall, and they're not going to have to type in their parcel number again, right? Uh, so it's really leveraging that technology. Uh, they can actually also sign up for text reminders right from their IVR as well. Uh, now, this all may sound great, uh, but simply put, if Tiffany and her team and the taxpayers didn't need this functionality, I don't think I would be here. So I wanted to pass it over to Tiffany. My process typically involves, um, spending time with Treasurers in their offices, just understanding what challenges they're having, right? So understanding, um, hey, how many paper checks are coming in and how much staff do you have to be able to process those payments, right? How much time are you guys losing from handling the phones? And what else could you be doing, right? And so, uh, the the whole process behind the goals and objectives and why Invoice Cloud for Grant County was not only for Tiffany and her team, but also for, um, the Commissioners to see that Invoice Cloud's business case for Grant County is pretty strong as well. So I was going to have Tiffany, uh, present that quickly, and then we can wrap up and just talk about pricing and field some questions.
So we sent over a one-year transactional file from our current credit card processing center, Forte, and we sent that over to Invoice Cloud, just so they could kind of investigate where we're at with credit card transactions, um, that we take in. And what they estimated was that in a year, we received, um, almost twelve hundred dollars or twelve hundred payments within that year. Um, and we guessed that about sixty percent of those, we have to take over our office phone and take those payment in in office, um, which equals out to roughly six hundred tax payments that we're having to take, um, over the phone, which was about fifty hours of our staff being, um, on the phones, taking credit card payments that truly should be self-service to do themselves. One of the issues that we're finding with our current credit card, um, vendor is that online payments, when they go to enter the parcel number, if you don't enter it a specific way, it says that it's an invalid parcel number. So then they're contacting our office. If they're calling it in through the, um, IVR system, if they don't have the accurate number that they need, they're having to call back our office. Um, there's just several issues that we're noticing, um, for self-service alone. Not to mention that with our reporting tools that we get from, um, Forte to reconcile on our side, they're not always giving us all the parcel numbers that are being paid on. They will give us maybe one or a partial number of that parcel. So we're still having to spend time in our terminal to look up all of those properties to pay on those. So it's really not a simple process for us to even post those payments as well. I will tell you, Adam was talking about the communication side of it. For me to send out tax statements, um, there were two postage rate increases in the last year. I was not anticipating just the amount of money. Um, in prior years, we spent a little over fourteen thousand dollars to send out tax statements, and that's just in postage alone. That is not to have them created and billed. This year, postage went up to over twenty thousand dollars. So we're looking at ways that we could also reduce that by getting more streamlined with the paperless option. Um, and again, you're getting more communications with that, because I only send out one tax statement a year. And again, postage for that's over twenty thousand at the current time. I can't send out a reminder, because you're looking at another fifty thousand dollars to process that. Um, Invoice Cloud does that three times for anyone who signs up for paperless. And I think that's phenomenal. I think that gives us an edge in, uh, Grant County for tax payment collections. Um, it sends out those reminders, and it just helps them. And it's a great way for them to pay right there on their mobile. Um, again, you're offering them more tender, uh, as well, options as well. So I think all in all, it's a great thing. And if we can increase those credit card payments and get individuals sign up for those paperless billing, where it's more simplistic for them, it cuts down on the need for me to hire more staff during those high collection times. And let me tell you right now, it's impossible to find individuals to just come in and open mail. So if it gives us more time to do that for ourselves, um, it will save also my budget line, um, for having to hire more individuals. Um, another thing that Adam didn't touch on is that they offer QR codes. That's something that can be put right on the tax statement themselves. So all they have to do is just open up their phones and scan that QR code, and they take, they can pay right from there, which is great. I think it's such a super simple, easy way for people to be able to pay it within seconds, without having to call in, without having to ask questions, and without having to deal with postage. Because let's face it, it's another expense that no one really wants to have to pay for. So.
Yeah, that's that's great. I appreciate that, Tiffany. Uh, so that that whole process right there was just to really outline, uh, how serious we take this at Invoice Cloud, is that we look to find a mutual fit, right? When I start conversations, and I think I started a conversation with you about a year ago, I said, hey, look, you know, we'll have a conversation. We'll get to know each other, understand your processes. And if, you know, we're trying to fit a square peg in a round hole here, we'll part ways as friends. Uh, and so we're able to, um, really connect, I think, on the outcomes that Invoice Cloud drives and what could really benefit Tiffany's staff, what could benefit the taxpayer, and ultimately impact the bottom line, um, for Grant County financially as well. Uh, so I did want to talk about pricing. We'll, we can kind of wrap up on that. Uh, our goal was also to give you guys, um, sort of the comprehensive proposal document. Typically, County Commissioners are, um, pretty busy. So it's totally understandable that you guys wouldn't be able to sit on a demo. But that proposal document that was sent over about a week ago typically, uh, is addressing about ninety to ninety-five percent of the functionality of the Invoice Cloud platform, at least. So you guys would be able to kind of go through that, scroll through it on your own time, and really get a comprehensive feel for the platform. Um, and then here we are, you know, wanted you guys to be able to bounce off questions to me as well. So, uh, all in for pricing, right now, I'd say, you know, it's a hundred and forty dollars a month. Uh, there's no upfront implementation charges. Uh, and so what Tiffany and I will, um, discuss is figuring out when the best time to implement is. So when we think about the Invoice Cloud platform, Tiffany is going to be headed into spring collections. And so we can talk together about potentially starting the implementation process in between spring and fall, and then actually going live most likely for spring of 2024. Now, what's important about that is, number one, we're not going to try and force Tiffany and her team to spend time on a software implementation when they don't have it. Simply put, you know, during May, I think all of your staff's time is going to be taken up.
Yeah.
Uh, and so when we think about that, Invoice Cloud doesn't charge any costs until we go live. Okay? So it's very typical for counties to be thinking about, um, you know, next installment or next year with Invoice Cloud, and just plan that out based on certain constraints as well. Uh, for paperless billing, uh, the very last sheet, I think is a really good example of, um, what I call the power of paperless billing, right? So Tiffany had spoken about some postage increases, but, uh, simply put, when we're driving one taxpayer to opt out of paper bills, they're going to be, uh, you guys will be able to save about fifty-five to sixty cents. I think that's a conservative estimate. Uh, we're very successful at doing that. We do charge, uh, an optional twenty cents just for keeping our communication engine intact and working well. Uh, then for a convenience fee model, so we're going to be doing two point nine five percent of the transaction amount, um, and a dollar ninety-five minimum flat fee for credit and debit processing. Um, and then for e-checks, that's going to be a dollar ninety-five flat fee up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars as well.
And currently, where our fees are right now, we charge a two point five five percent processing fee for all credit cards. It's a flat four dollar rate for debit, and it's two dollars for e-check.
Uh, and then, yeah, so that's, I'm pretty much wrapping it up. The IVR is a ninety-five cent surcharge as well. Uh, that'll be paid by the taxpayer. But in summary, for Grant County, it's typically going to be about a hundred and forty dollars a month all in as well. That covers all maintenance, support, and upgrades. Uh, so there's no hidden billable hours for any of those enhancements I was describing. Um, Tiffany and her team will get access to support resources as well. And she's unfortunately stuck with me as well. I come along with all my contracts, and, um, all my Treasurers typically have my phone saved and are on a texting basis as well. Um, at this point, I'd love to open it up for, um, questions from the Commissioners or really anybody in the room.
How long have you been with the company?
I've been with Invoice Cloud for a little over three years.
Okay.
So since January of 2020.
Gotcha. Okay. And you had mentioned that you are currently set up with four other counties right now?
Yeah.
Ten total in Indiana.
Ten in Indiana.
Yep.
Okay. I thought you said something about four.
So I personally, on behalf of the invoice cloud partner with with four, and then we've we've been in Indiana tax now for over, I think, since about 2013.
Okay.
So we've got a longstanding, um, relationship with Indiana for tax.
Okay. And Tiffany, what do we pay now?
So right now with Forte, they don't charge us any fees. They get their fees through, um, the processing fees. processing fees. So that's where we're at. And I know that sounds like, okay, that's, we don't pay or pay anything right now for their contractual agreements. I just want to-
Kind of getting what we're paying for.
Right. Yeah. And I do want to point out, we have been so happy with their customer service. I will always say that it has been by far one of the best vendors that we've ever worked with as far as customer service goes. But the need for our office is increasing and it's increasing year by year. And we're seeing it more and more, how it affects us as far as our efficiency goes. And within the last year, we have noticed, especially with our payments and posting, we're seeing a lot of errors in their reporting, and it's causing us to have errors on our side when we're posting because we're just simply not getting the information that we need. And so it's a risk to stay with them at this point. So I feel very strongly about being able to move forward with another vendor that not only gives us correct information, but something that we can utilize and be efficient as far as the backend of things, but it makes it simple for the taxpayers alike, and can save us money as far as sending out statements goes.
Yeah. And if I may add, just just for more context, Tiffany and I had a conversation in February of 2022. And so Tiffany, at the conclusion of our conversation said, in theory, invoice cloud sounds really great, but I want to wait until Allen County goes live to go that they'll go through a successful implementation process, and that they'll be a referenceable customer. And so Tiffany did that. I think Bill and Sam over at Allen County are quite happy with us. And that's allowed me to also partner with Madison County, Vigo County, and DeKalb County as well in the last six months.
Okay. That was my question. Marcus, do you have, I know it's not apples and apples, but me and the IT guy, do you have any comments, concerns?
No. Like I said, Tiffany already mentioned that it works with Lao. I mean, that was my biggest concern when she first brought this up because I wasn't aware of this. So I mean, as long as it works with Lao in their system, and we have that interoperability in between the two, then I don't see any issue. Because you said that application was web-based, right?
Yes.
So it's probably just a web link we would give out.
Yeah. So I don't see any problem.
Yeah. And just to touch on the Lao piece, Lao typically has a taxpayer-facing experience where we've got a backend integration for that. So where the taxpayer will query their parcels still, how they have always done in Lao. And then when they click pay, they'll get rerouted to invoice cloud on the backend, which is completely integrated. So how much they pay, being able to view a copy of their bill, that's all going to be in that experience. What Vigo County has done with Josie with me is that they've set it up both ways so that somebody can also go through Lao, but they can also go through the invoice cloud standalone experience as well. Something that we refer to as the flywheel effect with invoice cloud is that when a taxpayer pays through the platform one time, they're actually automatically enrolled in email reminders moving forward. Right? So it's the lift for Tiffany and her team is if we can just get one taxpayer to pay online one time, then they're much more likely to not only remember to pay their next bill on time, but also to pay in a digital manner as well. So.
Yes. I can tell you, I'll just chime in as my last comment, then you guys can go. Part of my job at the bank is, is I do customer calling and I a lot of times team up with our merchant processing. And it's not the same, it's not the exact same, but we go out and offer companies credit card payments, debit card payments. And I can tell you for what would be a company our size, the $140 is not much at all. I mean, that's, that's, that's not a concern. So I'll just throw that out there.
A segue into me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
When you talk about paperless billing, 20, 20 cents, is, do we pay that?
Correct.
We pay that?
Yeah.
The customer does not pay that much?
No. So yeah, so it'll be 20 cents per enrollment.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. And so what that looks like is, you know, you think about one less stamp, right?
Yeah.
One less bill, less ink, less postage. So that's, that's only on a per billing basis. So you guys send out one statement per year, right? When you suppress that bill, that's what that 20 cents charge is incurred.
Okay. The counties that you order for the take rate on paperless?
So typically for Indiana counties, within one year, we arrive at anywhere from 7% to 10% total paperless billing. So the reason why I put that on my table is that I usually look through analysis and statistics for relevant markets. So I'm not going to pull Illinois tax as an example for Indiana. So on average, we're anywhere from 7% to 10% enrollments after two tax events, which is one calendar year. And so when we look at that, you know, we're able to kind of calculate together, Tiffany and I, that all-in costs, conservative estimate is about 75 cents per bill. And then when you're able to drive, about 10% of taxpayers paying online, that's looking close to about $4,000 in tax savings annually. So not only does it cover the cost of monthly access fee, but it should be enabling you guys to go cost positive with your relationship with us pretty quickly.
You said our current rate is 2.55. You're the company that we're at, you're 2.95, correct? $4 for debit? How do you guys treat debit?
Same as credit.
Same as credit?
Yes.
And do we pay? We pay that charge? Do we pay the 2.55?
No, the taxpayer.
Taxpayer.
Yes.
Okay. Just trying to make sure of that, all the numbers then. Marcus, when it comes to the new state website, I know there's payments that could be collected like in the, Ryan's area, come on, see. Area plan. So how does, how does this all integrate into us? Is that?
Well, I mean, this is a whole separate system because you're thinking about the GIS or the new system for area plan. And like, they have their own payment processors, so those are two separate entities. But with this being a web-based system as well, there'd just be another link we would add on our website for the public. So that way they would have access to either one.
And something that I'll piggyback off of that, I partnered with Vigo County for tax payments, and the treasurer was really enthusiastic about invoice cloud. And she spoke internally with other departments, and so their health department reached out to me. And they're taking online payments and in-office payments through invoice cloud for their health department. So when you guys think of invoice cloud, a chief, I think, goal for a lot of counties and municipalities is providing a consolidated online payments experience. Simply put, if I need to make an online payment payable to the county, I go to one place, right? So Vigo County's done that. Typically, we start with treasurer's offices and word of mouth starts to kind of proliferate around the county offices. And then if other departments want to join invoice cloud, I can send them up for sure.
Which I think was a goal of the commissioners at one point in time when area plan adopted their software, where there was some concern that we would like to umbrella those type of payments.
Yep.
I was just, I was just looking, you know, the amount of vendors.
Yeah.
That we have in the monthly service for those vendors.
Yeah, because I know that one is tied in with, I think it's the pay.gov vendor. So I don't, maybe we could ask them if they would have the capability of entering with these folks. Trying to remember the name of the software here, just to see if they know what it is.
If it is pay.gov, I'm quite familiar with them. We displace them pretty, pretty frequently. It just tells me that if it is pay.gov, that it's not integrated into the GIS software. So when we talk about Lao, we've got enhanced integration built out with Lao. But if it is pay.gov, we can do the exact same thing. And then you can consolidate it all. It just might not be integrated into the GIS software.
Right.
So I'm quite familiar in terms of understanding your software landscape and being able to say, I know for tax payments, that will be integrated, and that's by far, we wouldn't even be talking if we couldn't integrate.
But have you, do you have, have any integration with, I think it's called a geospatial?
I don't think so. That's what I mean. But if you're using pay.gov, then invoice cloud can do the exact same thing. And then you guys give a cheap consolidation in terms of bringing it under one vendor.
Okay. So you would just be able to work with pay.gov then?
No, we would just, we'd probably displace them.
Oh, you just take, okay, gotcha. That's interesting.
Now, I will say typically, we're quite competitive with pay.gov on processing rates. So we can, you know, discuss that piece as well. I'm not going to come here and tell you guys to remove pay.gov if we're at a significantly higher processing rate than that. We're very transparent, straightforward in terms of what makes the most sense. However, you know, consolidation, you think about additional departments with online and point-of-sale options, then we can certainly be that one vendor that you guys could use.
That's all.
You got one of my questions answered, so I'll go down a different line. It seems like we're just asking during the tax season for them to go to paperless. Will there be any additional campaigns on how taxpayers can opt in? Is there anything to that effect? Are we just going to do it once a year, twice a year when the bills come out?
Yeah. So it's a, it's a really great question because there's sort of an illumination period where, you know, Tiffany starts to talk about, hey, we just spent six grand out of budget for our postage costs. And it's, you know, these are, these costs are rising twice a year, and it's starting to get out of control. What invoice cloud does is also a very big differentiator. I kind of wish I could put it in the slides here, so bear with me, gentlemen. We actually provide marketing resources to all of our counties. And so that will really feed into that QR code piece that Tiffany was talking about. We're working with print mail vendors that, that Grant County's using. So we'll provide them with that QR code. But now Tiffany and her team will also be able to do things like put out invoice cloud branded information on the website itself. Now, there are some zealous counties who will even send out direct mailers. There's of course a cost associated with that. But removing the friction in that process is that we could create branded information, and all you'd have to do is say, well, let's send this out, as opposed to you having to worry about creation and all of that. So we do offer marketing resources to do things to jump start adoption campaigns. And then lastly, every time somebody goes through a payment process through invoice cloud barring the IVR, just because you can't sign up for paperless billing through IVR, but anytime someone goes through a payment flow, whether it be on their cell phone or a computer to pay online, they're always prompted to sign up for paperless billing. And it's just extremely simple. We have them input an email address because that's how, that's their means of receipt. And then all they have to do is literally just check a box if they want to go paperless. We have done things with aggressive counties and municipalities to say, in the user flow, the go paperless box is checked, and that the taxpayer or the end user would have to uncheck it if they did not want to go paperless, right? I've spoken with many counties who they love paperless billing, and it feels very idealistic to them. But in execution, in terms of how the software delivers it, is problematic. We've been doing paperless for over six years now, and the multiple notifications process is extremely important because people, I think it happens today where some taxpayers are paperless, and then they call Tiffany the office, and they forget that they're paperless. And they say, hey, wait a second, I didn't get my tax bill. What's going on? You have to remove my penalty. So that's when you see sending out up to three, tripling that visibility, it really decreases the, the, how, how much that will happen, the frequency of that happening. Tiffany and her team also will get access to reporting on when people are interacting with paperless billing notifications, and if any paperless notifications bounce. So all this front end that we're talking about does translate to the backend in terms of having visibility into it, metrics, analysis, to be able to see how our platform is, is working as well.
Last question, do you guys want to chew on this more? One, just springboard off that. So when you talk about the customer themselves, I see where you had text and email. You sign them up with whatever they would like to be contacted for, for the paperless. Is that correct?
Correct. So the way that it's set up out of the box is that when somebody goes paperless, it'll always be for email. When I described, you know, just checking the box for enrolling in paperless billing, there's also another box a little bit lower. That's sign up for pay by text as well. Now, when taxpayers register accounts, which maybe you gentlemen have like a registered account, maybe with Amazon, people, people and family typically have like a payment method on file. What happens is when we send out a pay by text or an email notification, we actually do one-click pay, even from that, right? So you could pay, you could pay your taxes if you have a payment method on file by just typing in PAY on your text and not even having to open up, you know, any application at all as well. So.
Could you name some of the counties that you would?
Yeah, sure. So Vigo County, they just went live, DeKalb County, just when, they've actually been live for a couple of months now. And then Allen County, got Bill and Sam at Allen County, and Marion County, which is Indianapolis, Bartholomew County, Boone County, and then also, I'm working with Dan and Ashley over at Madison County. They're in implementation process right now. A couple others, I don't, I admit, I don't have them all memorized though.
You said your office is in Brownsburg?
So I work, I'm a remote rep, so I'm based right up, right in Brownsburg, which I think Tiffany's, you feel confident, right? I've been here multiple times in person. We've spent a lot of time together at conference. But Indiana is my territory.
So if there was an emergency and she needed you to be here one day, it would not be an issue?
Yeah. So my primary thing that I always tell treasurers is that if there is an emergency, I am your primary means of escalation. Say Tiffany knows that she can pick up the phone and call me and say, hey, this is code red, I need something fixed right away. She can text me or call me.
And again, I just want to touch on, this has been a conversation that's been long-standing for over a year. I didn't want to jump into anything very quickly because again, I wanted to stick with where we knew the customer service was still great, even if there were still some kinks. I feel like loyalty sometimes trumps that. But we're seeing more and more and more issues as it comes. And the time that it's going to save us, and hopefully the, the cost that it's going to save us, and when Adam came and did the demo, just to see everything that we could benefit from, and the taxpayers could benefit from, it really opened our eyes because our current vendor doesn't offer nine out of 10 of those things. So we really, it was probably a good eight months of us really chatting back and forth. And I wanted to see how implementation went. And again, like he said, with Allen County, and because they also use Lao, I wanted to see how seamless it would be for us if we decided to move forward with that. And I, I feel very strongly about it would be a great integration process for us, and we wouldn't have any issues. And Adam's been phenomenal anytime we've needed him. Have any questions?
One last question and one comment. If you were to add additional departments on there, is it safe to assume a similar monthly cost?
Yeah. So typically, what I do is I don't like to kind of add more and more monthly access fees. So bringing on another department, I think I could do with no extra monthly access fee for point-of-sale devices, depending on which one you go to, that, that may be like something like $10 a month or $30 a month, depending on the type of point-of-sale device that's offered. This is particularly because, you know, I spent a little bit of time talking about safety and security. We encrypt all of our card readers out of the box. So even with point-of-sale transactions, you gentlemen may have heard of compromised debit and credit processing at gas stations. So we actually encrypt all of our devices. So there's a rental fee for those. But in terms of the monthly access fee, I can, I can get that taken care of. You guys enjoy.
And I guess my last comment would be, I'm assuming this would be some, if considered, somewhat of a contractual service, in which case we are very strained in the area. Actually, commissioners asking for additional appropriation, kind of council meeting. So just something to consider.
Even if you mentioned it before I asked it, but if we've got to pay out of contractual services, I mean, it's $16.80 a year plus the incidentals, but we definitely have to go for an appropriation.
Yeah. So when we talked about the implementation process as well, there's nothing stopping Grant County to say, we can sign with invoice cloud this year. And then Tiffany and I, my team internally can work on the implementation process and then kind of line up when you go live, which makes the most sense for the treasurer's office. And then when it lines up with budget, is your guys' budget correlated with your calendar year, or is it a different?
It's a budget.
Calendar.
Calendar year. Okay. So in that scenario, we could certainly go live with you guys in January or February. Calendar year. Okay, so in that scenario, we could certainly go live with you guys in January or February. We do need at least 90 to 100 days for implementation. We also need to get you guys in queue. So that's when we, that's why we've been going through this process now, is to start to say, let's develop this timeline out together. Now, we work with budgetary constraints, things like that as well. If you're saying, hey, we can't go out of pocket for this year, then it's really not that big of a deal because we're looking at spring and fall. So those are already what we refer to as blackout periods. Like counties are kind of untouchable because of all of your vendors taken out. So what do you guys think about that for FY '23? You can say, okay, this doesn't have much of an impact as well. Was that clarifying or is that more confused?
So initial construction of the project program services, you're going to give all, all that to us and we start paying you $140 in January?
When, after, after go live.
After go live.
Correct. So that's like, you know, something that we work on together to develop that timeline. Now Tiffany will be along the step with you guys based on budgetary constraints as well. Say, hey, we, the budget is tight. Say, hey, we can't actually go live before FY '24. Then we can say, man, that's great. We can make sure that you guys are planned out implementation-wise to go live in January.
So we can approve it, but then work, then you two work on when?
Correct.
You go live and then that's when? At the first bills, that's when we first pay, pay the first bill?
Yeah. I mean, it's quite, it's quite common. We are signing about 25 to 30 new clients a month. So that's why when we talk about planning and execution, that's why we started now to say, FY '24 is not that far away. You're probably anticipating another postage rate increase even before then. So the, I think the, the need of the business case will probably only even heighten as a, as a result of time, so.
Pull the trigger now, you want to talk about it?
I gotta be honest, I like what I, I definitely like what I hear.
I do.
You would like to discuss offline, I'm okay with that. But just, you know, I like what I hear. I'll defer to you two as far as the timing.
I'm going to be easy. What kind of paperwork these three signed with an agreement?
So I'm kind of, I'm kicking myself a little bit. I did have a extenuating circumstance with you gentlemen. Can forgive me, I would have come here with a contract, but it was tied up this past week. Typically, what I do with treasurers is to say, we look to get approval pending legal review. So that's what we, Tiffany and I discussed coming here today with, is that we look to gain approval for you guys. We're looking to do a three-year contract term length. So when we, when we eat all, absorb all of those implementation costs, the way that we make our money is not by that $140 monthly access fee. It's by another community's fee basis. So what I, what we wanted to do was gain approval and then get Tiffany over the contract of board over to your county attorney. I never recommend our contracts to get signed without county attorney approval. It's just not, it's a quick way to get you in trouble. So we were just looking to get that squared away. And then ultimately, once the county attorney approves, we can send it over to you guys to review a question asking period and then subsequent signature.
So we can consent, allow this one?
We can just consent to our disparing.
Yeah.
For review.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're consenting to that, we're in good shape.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one other item that popped up. We just wanted to get it in discussion mode, that being ARCA money. Currently, Grant County is holding $12.7 million. We have already by resolution committed $2,500,000 to Gas City Project. We've had other requests. And so that's what we want to verbally discuss in a public session. We may not pull that trigger today, but at least these requests have come in. We have asked to be a part of the airport sewer water project with Marion Utilities, the city of Marion, the airport authority, in the amount of $500,000. Request by the drainage board for $200,000 on drainage for general fund, general maintenance. $200,000 request, middle township on construction support for their administrative and engine compartments there. And $1.2 million on a boiler-chiller project for this and the county jail buildings combined. That would still leave us $8,74,857.
What was the time on that last time?
$8,74,857 to be held for potentially HVAC, the home repair renovations and/or new jail as we work with the county council. So again, we do not have to act on that. We would, we would want to say, these are worthy of our consideration and we would send these lots down to our consultant and make sure that those comply. And then get back to us and say, these are positive or not positive ways to use our money. Is that all right to send that down to Jim for review?
Yeah, can you, can you remind me on the chiller? You mentioned chiller for the jail.
Chiller boilers. We have items that service both this building and the jail.
Okay.
I want to say they have already been declared end of life.
And they have, they're beyond the life. There's about five pieces actually, so one chiller, essentially four boilers. Two of those are already dead and the other two have been declared beyond their lifecycle.
So we are going to have to, one way or another, and this is a potential way to offset any general costs on those right now. So just want to see if it's, meets the criteria or the canon for what we can use ARCA money for. So we'll send those down to Jim and go from there.
Yep. Sounds good.
Yep. All right, do you guys have any other new business that you need to introduce?
I do not.
I do not.
All right, we're going to a public comment. At this time, the public is invited to speak before the board. Please approach the podium when recognized by the president and state your name and address. Comments should be addressed to the board in limited to items on the agenda or needs of the individual. No complaints, accusations, name-calling regarding personnel can be allowed during the public discussion time. Time limit of three minutes will be given. If more than one person is representing a group, only one spokesperson will be heard. It is expected that professionalism and courtesy is displayed at all times during the public comment portion of this meeting. We will have had some folks already ask about that. And so, sir, if you would like to step up to the podium and present your name, address, and conserved your comments.
Thank you, thank you. Name's Ron Baer, formerly of Shady acre in Mobile Home Court. Marion, South Side Marion, I don't know if you're familiar where that's at, off 39th Street, just blocks out to Hootimaki. This is went to new owners last July. And the people out there, I, I have recently moved from there this past fall. These, these gals here have bought my place. It's been a mess since this new owner's gotten it. I have talked with this new owner, Todd Murphy, what I gather his name is. He lives down in Brownsburg. Four times of getting utility bills changed on my mobile home, which he's neglected. They have bought another person's mobile home in there from that individual and still continue to send that person water bills and there's no one even living there. Just recently, there was a tree that fell over out there that damaged two cars. One car was approximately $2,500 damage, another one around $600 damage. And the owner told them, I hope you have good insurance. Well, this tree was reported by me twice, another owner twice. The tree was already leaning and uprooted. It got blowed over and knocked out these two cars and one, one car was totally, was totaled. And even the other person that had insurance, they still had to buy, pay the deductible, then buy their car back. Well, ironically, they just worked across the road there at Hootimaki and the car looks terrible, but they just drive it back and forth. And they've got about $600 that they've had to spend out of their own pocket. And they said it was an act of God and I, we claim it was an act of neglect and it was reported to you. Some of the grass out there hasn't been mowed since previous owner since July 15th. There has been, somebody stole their garbage bag out, out there at a stop sign. It's been there since August, it's been reported to them. There's, they've been trying to get people to sign leases out there. The lease is only concerned, the situation, they're concerned more like an apartment building. The lease says they have the right to come in your house and change a lock and lock you out if you don't have the rent paid. Well, people out there own their own mobile homes and they rent the property. But I myself, when I was out there, I had personally cut three trees down because the former owner would not take them down. And it shouldn't be the, people live out, their responsibility is to take care of the trees.
What exactly are you asking of the commissioner?
Well, we re-licensed the county and it's a new owner. And we don't know who to go to complain to that can do something for us. Because this guy is not doing anything. I've been out there since September, I've talked to him. He still continues to mail me the water bill. And I've been giving to this gal for the most part, so she can go pay it. But I don't know if the commissioners can do anything to him or not, or where we need to go as residents.
Ryan Malott is, is online with us. Ryan, are you listening in right now? He's the director of our area plan and we have some, does, does this sound familiar? Have you received any complaints in area plan about this at this time?
This is the first we've heard of it. We were just, we just did a rezoning out there for the previous owner to get it into a mobile home park. At that time, he said he wasn't selling it. So this is even the first that we've heard he's sold it.
He, he sold it back in July. We got a paper hand-delivered to us, this hand-delivered to me on the 19th, of different things that they wanted from us out there. And everything was supposed to go electronically. Well, 90% of the people out there don't even have computers and you can't even get internet in there. I just came from the assessor's office and every time somebody says something, he wants to throw state rules and laws back at us. Well, I understand by state laws, as of January of each year, you're supposed to submit a list to the assessor's office of the new owners for that current year so they know where to send the tax bills. He's neglected to do this. I just found out after a little bit ago, this morning.
What I would like to recommend for you, Ron, and ladies, is up on the fourth floor, Ryan Malott is our area plan director and he can receive those complaints. We do have some code enforcement, they can probably go out and look at things as well. And, and he would be the fellow that I would put you with to at least get the ball rolling.
All right.
He's there to collect the rent, that's all that guy wants.
Well, he, he may be wanting to collect rent, but we also need to accountable, hold him accountable for his, his part of what he's been providing for you.
He's a floodlord. And I know that we have a lot of trouble with the mail. It never gets there. And when it does.
Just a real quick question.
When it does, it's just tall and there's bills in it to be paid. And they're late, then you have to pay a late fee.
Right, yes.
Well, I'm sorry, but the mailman comes every day and yet he don't leave your mail. Okay, I've sent to St. Jude's Children's Hospital all the time. I had three of them this month sent. He never picked them up. And his excuse was, I won't because it says, no, not necessary for a stamp. So I had to take him down to the post office and I said, do you see this? And she said, yes ma'am, I do. She says, so? I said, so he wouldn't mail them because it didn't have a stamp?
Yep. So just a real quick question.
Sure.
When it comes to the water bills, so how is that? Is, is, is there a, is there a main coming in and then you guys got your own meters that you pay to him?
Yeah, the, the court is on city water and sewer.
Yep.
Each trailer, mobile home has a meter on it. A gentleman comes through and reads that and we get a separate meter bill or a separate water bill from that individual to pay along with our rent at the first time.
So, so, okay, so he's bringing it in and then he's distributing it?
He's supposed to, he's mailing them, those water bills are mailed.
He's trying to figure that out.
Okay, and he's been told about the different, you know, situations and.
Yeah, he usually gets my water bill.
Okay.
Yeah, well.
Fourth floor area plan, that's who we need you to contact.
Yeah, we, we will get out there because we had even, even last year, there was a question on how many lots were available out there with the number of trailers that were currently there. And if half of the park, there was a question on the sewage that hadn't been used in several years. So if we've got a new owner out there, we want to get out there anyway.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for bringing in our attention. All righty, anyone else like to address the board this morning? Right, gentlemen, do you have any other items of business?
I do not, sir.
Good.
All right, I don't have my calendar up in front of me.
May 1st.
May 1st, very good. We will be in recess until May 1st and thank you for your time. We are in recess. Thank you.
Thank you.